So why don't we go ahead and get going because it's actually a nice spring evening. So we can get out of here perhaps sooner rather than later. So if everyone can quiet down a little bit so people can hear, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everyone and take roll call. We have our amazing student trustee here. And then the trustees who are not here are trustee Beers and trustee McDonald. And we still have one vacancy for the target range boner position. And then trustee Duggar is available by telephone. So that saucer shaped placeholder at the table is actually trustee Duggar. And so we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. So let's all stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now item number three on the agenda is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Does any trustee have a recommendation to somehow revise the agenda, a different order or anything? Seeing none, then it's okay to move ahead under the agenda as it's been established. Seeing nods around the table, we'll go ahead and do that. So item number four is to approve various minutes. The first is to approve the board of trustees' regular meeting from May 8th, which are found beginning on page five. Are there any corrections, clarifications, omissions from those that anyone caught? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of May 8th? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Kendall. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And trustee Duggar?
Yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous as to all trustees present. The next is the special meeting on May 17th, which are found beginning on page 15. Is there any correction or omission that we need to add information in? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on May 17th? No, moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee Newbold. So all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And trustee Duggar?
Yes.
Thanks. Then we move on to the regular, the minutes from the regular board meeting on May 22nd, beginning on page 18. Are there any corrections, omissions, changes that need to be made? See none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting from May 22nd? Moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Trustee Duggar?
Yes.
Thanks. So that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come to public comment and correspondence. There is one, there is correspondence beginning on page 28. And this is the time now for any public comment on non-agenda items, which would be items that we're not going to be discussing later on the agenda, but ones which anyone in the public wants to bring to the board's attention so as to identify areas that we should look into if possible. So if there's any comments on non-agenda items, please come to the podium, press the little button so the red light goes on, state your first and last name, and then if you represent an organization, identify the organization as well. Seeing none, that was a long speech for no public comment tonight. So now we'll move on to 6A, which are not Smith's from superintendent thing.
Thank you. As you know, last Friday was the conclusion of the 2017-18 school year for students. And I'm really pleased with the conclusion to the school year and all the great success that was experienced across the district. I would be remiss, however, if I didn't note that despite the fact that school and the contract year for many of our staff members ended Friday, over the course of the last two days, we've had in excess of 60 of our certified teaching staff engaged in professional development activities. So a lot of good work being done and certainly commend the staff for starting their summer by continuing their professional learning. And I think that speaks volumes about our district and the staff's willingness to continue to improve their craft in order to support our students. On page 46 in the packet, there are some calendar items. Items of note would be that with transition to summer, the administration building, business building, and our high school offices will now be working four 10-hour days. So we'll work Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The exception to that will be the week of the Fourth of July, and that gets a little bit more complicated, so I won't go into detail. We, of course, have our regular board meeting tonight and are scheduled for our second June board meeting on Tuesday, June 26th at 6:00 p.m. in this building. All schools and offices will be closed in observance of Independence Day on July 4th. We are scheduled for our first July regular meeting of the board of trustees on Tuesday, July 10th. We would normally have a second meeting Tuesday, July 24th, and at this point, that's on hold. We may cancel that. We'll evaluate with regard to two elements. First of all, Smart Schools 2020, but also budget preparation, whether or not we'll hold that meeting. So we'll notice trustees in advance of all that. So again, just so appreciative of all staff, classified, certified, administrative, for all their efforts this school year. And we had great graduation celebrations at our three urban high schools, Sealy and Willard, and have nearly 900 students that transitioned out of MCPS. And we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the community and to serve all those students. Thank you.
Thanks. And then we move on to 6B, which are announcements from any trustee. Any trustees have announcements? Seeing none, then we move on to the consent agenda. There's one item on the consent agenda. It's an elementary trustee action item, and it's to approve an MCPS student attendance agreement, which is found on page 49. And Pat, is there anything of note?
No.
Okay. So when something's placed on the consent agenda, that means that the board sees these types of items regularly. They're fairly perfunctory, so we won't be discussing it, but we will take public comment after there's a motion and a second. So is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the item on the consent agenda? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Kendall. As I indicated, we won't be providing any discussion, but if there's any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the item on the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to elementary trustees present. Then we move, pardon? Okay. And so we move on to approving the second reading of board policy 4334335, which is website accessibility. And although it indicates Hatton will be talking about this, this will be superintendent thing.
Thank you. On the April 24th agenda, we completed first reading of board policy 4335, which is related to website accessibility. And of course, one of the things that we pride ourselves on in the district is that we want all our facilities, as well as all our documents, including those that are posted on the website, to be accessible to all consumers within the community. There's been a significant amount of action across the country with regard to making certain that all information that's posted on public school websites is acceptable, or is accessible, excuse me, to all who may have an interest. So that might be everything from closed captioning to reading those documents via a reader. So the school district has endeavored to develop board policy 4335 in its revised form to make sure that we guarantee accessibility to everything that is hung from our school district website. So that effort is underway. We are in the process of continuing professional development of all staff. And you may recall that Tracy Long attended the April meeting and discussed the professional development that she's conducted in the trainings out in the buildings. And we've made significant inroads, and we'll continue that over the course of the next year. The policy's been posted for public review, and we received no public comment.
Any questions from any trustee for superintendent thing before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees adopt board policy 4435, captioned website accessibility, as it's been presented previously on first reading and set out for public comment. Is there a motion to adopt board policy 4435? Moved by trustee Smith, seconded by trustee Decker.
4335.
Yeah. 4435?
4335.
Oh, okay. So in the recommendation which I'm reading from, it says 4435. So let's correct the motion. So is there a motion to adopt board policy 4335? So moved by trustee Smith, then is it seconded again by trustee Decker? Thanks. And so any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting board policy 4335, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Duggar?
Yes.
Thanks. That's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to item number two, which is also coming before us for, to approve the second reading. Superintendent thing?
Thank you. The revisions to board policy 3110 were conceived so that we would have the latitude, should the district wish to exercise such, to implement an early kindergarten program. So we made adjustments to the language that were brought forward to the trustees on April 24th. Again, that's been posted for public comment following first reading, and no public comment has been received. So a copy of the revised policies in the packet, and the administration recommends adoption of board policy 3110, entrance placement and transfer.
Any questions for superintendent thing? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the revised board policy 3110? Moved by trustee Decker, is there a seconded? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of adopting the revised board policy 3110 titled entrance placement and transfer, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous, wait, I'm sorry, trustee Duggar?
Yes.
Good, that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to B1, which is an elementary action item. And superintendent thing, there's background information that's been presented. Could you give us any updates on this particular topic?
Thank you. I'm feeling like Pat McCue today, all these agenda items. Just by way of background information, the last curriculum review cycle for English Language Arts was conducted in 2012. And at that time, there was a fairly substantial revision of the standards and benchmarks in our curriculum document. What was significant about that was the document was updated to align with the Common Core standards and the new frameworks for English Language Arts that had been developed. However, the committee at that time discovered that the publishing companies had not yet caught up with development of materials that supported Common Core aligned curriculum. So the decision was made in 2012 not to purchase new English Language Arts materials. So the materials that we have continued to use since that date are essentially two adoptions old. Many of them are copyrights around the year 2000, and they are not Common Core aligned. And I think the greatest significance there is that if you look at the framework around Common Core, by the time a student gets to fourth, well, normally, we say kindergarten through third grade, students learn to read. Fourth grade on, you read to learn. And the Common Core standards reflect that to a degree. By grade four, 50% of the work that is suggested in the framework would be informational text or technical text. And by the time you then progress to grade 12, the recommendation is 70% of the text should be informational or technical. And in fact, the research that's been conducted on college and career readiness would state that about 70% of what's read in college is, again, informational or technical text. So as you look at college and career readiness, that's an important element that needs to be considered. So our current materials are not in alignment with Common Core, nor do they support teaching the curriculum as we've developed it. So the real function of the board here is we have an adopted curriculum. And the curriculum is the standards and the benchmarks that were adopted in 2012. So the majority of the work that's been conducted most recently has been to go through those standards and benchmarks and identify those that are considered priority standards. It's essentially what we guarantee we'll teach to all students so that we have a common understanding of what a student should know and be able to do when they leave Missoula County Public Schools. The next task to be completed was to develop a rubric to evaluate materials against our standards. So do the materials support teaching to the standards that we purport to teach? And after evaluation of the rubric, there has been a recommendation for adoption on the elementary side of two different sets of materials. And I want to be really clear that this is not the curriculum that we're adopting, but this is a recommendation for materials so that teachers can teach to our adopted curriculum. So this is purely a materials recommendation. So those general comments apply to both of the next two items, the first being recommendation from the task force for adoption of K5, English Language Arts materials. And the recommendation that was presented to the trustees at the May 8th board meeting would be the adoption of the primary set of materials, which is ReadyGen, which is a Common Core aligned reading series, along with Daily 5 and the ERLA. And Daily 5 essentially is a framework for teaching, and ERLA is an assessment instrument and program. So that's the work that's been done. A couple weeks ago, I surveyed all K5 teachers that teach English Language Arts in the elementary district, and we had over an 80% favorable response to the recommendation for adoption of these three items.
Thanks. Any questions for superintendent thing? Sure, trustee.
I know I don't get to vote on this, but if the ERLA comes back, and that's the test that you provide to the students, is that correct?
The ERLA is essentially formative in nature, so it would allow teachers to conduct assessment on students and then put the right materials into the students' hands to help them shore up those areas that are relative weaknesses in their profile. So it's not like our smarter balanced assessment, for example. It's truly formative in nature.
Okay, I'm just trying to get it clear in my head what we're going to be doing here, even though I don't get to vote on this.
Nope, that's perfect.
So if the, if the materials that they use in what you're saying here, they don't meet the standards, I mean, the kids are not doing as well as they thought they were, or they're exceeding the, what they're supposed to be doing, which I would prefer, but can they change this curriculum or is this curriculum set in stone?
So again, the curriculum is the adopted set of standards that we already have. So here's, here's what I would say, and it's an extension of your question. The state assessment that we complete is the smarter balanced assessment, and we're part of a consortium, multiple states, that take the smarter balanced assessment. The smarter balanced test items are developed in alignment with the Common Core standards. So if we don't, and our curriculum is in alignment with the state's adopted standards and the Common Core standards. But if we don't put materials in the hands of teachers to support teaching to those standards, I would say our students are a disadvantage. So what in my mind is critical is having that degree of alignment all the way through the system. And I think that's the most efficient and effective practice.
And that's probably what I'm trying to get at here, is that we make sure that whatever we need to have to make sure that they are able to do their jobs, to make sure that the students are getting able to the things that they need, require. That's my goal.
Absolutely. And that would be our goal.
Thanks. So can you speak a little bit to the feedback loop that's going to be in place going forward? Because from the way I understand it, the elementary program is going to be pulling from three different sort of, three different programs or packages and kind of creating a hybrid, but it's going to be used in a similar way, we hope, all across the district so that there's more consistency between what kids are being exposed to at grade levels from school to school to school. So what's the, what's the feedback process that's going to then play into how satisfied teachers are with this process, whether they're getting the support that they feel like they need, whether all schools are performing? Can you just speak a little bit to how that's going to?
Certainly.
And how long this decision is, is going to drive?
Sure. So we conduct a review of curriculum on a five-year cycle that we submit to the Office of Public Instruction. And so this actually is a continuation of the work that was begun in 2017. So as you contemplate the K5, really ReadyGen is the bulk of the adopted material. That's going to be the most significant piece. The Daily 5 is really a framework for teaching. And in terms of feedback loop or teacher professional development, yesterday, 40-some-odd teachers in the elementary actually spent their day, full day, working on Daily 5. Today, a group of elementary teachers came in and did a second level of Daily 5. Tomorrow, all the elementary principals will go through professional development with Daily 5. So again, an opportunity to immerse themselves in the materials, to learn not only how you're going to teach it, but principles, develop an understanding of what they should be looking for, and how they should supervise and evaluate staff who are implementing the curriculum. Throughout the course of the year, next year, we'll have those continued professional development opportunities. We're going to phase in the ERLA. Again, it's a lot to bite off at one time. So three schools have indicated their readiness to start with the ERLA, but we're going to wait until second semester. And again, it's not primarily material that would support teaching specifically to the standards and benchmarks as kind of original curriculum, but it will provide an assessment and then provide recommendations on the just right materials that would come to augment, again, what's being done primarily through ReadyGen. But there'll be continued professional development, there'll be continued work in professional learning communities. This is the most significant and most critical adoption that we'll face. Again, reading has an impact on all content areas. So your question's well placed. It's important that we continue to have that feedback loop. It's important that we continue to hear from teachers what areas they feel they need to be supported in order to be successful with the materials. And I'm confident that the plan that's been derived will certainly facilitate that.
Which state schools?
Chief Charlo.
Rattlesnake and Franklin.
Rattlesnake and Franklin, thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Lorenzen?
A couple. One, is Daily 5 something that we've been working with already is one question. The other question is, how much is this going to cost?
Some schools have piloted Daily 5. I don't know how extensively, and again, maybe members of the committee could chime in or at least.
So Hawthorne does Daily 5. Cold Springs began it this year with some book study work based on just some interest that was staff driven. Franklin began it last year. Rattlesnake does a little of it, and Lowell does a little bit. And if I could add one thing to the feedback loop, with all of the professional development, our exit slips and surveys and ways that we continue to gather teacher voice so that they then choose what they will continue to learn the second or third time that they get together. So they are actually driving the formation of the agenda based on what they say they need next.
Perfect. And then the second part of your question was cost. You might have to help me on this. I believe the K5 portion is at about $450,000, is maybe a little more than that, which would again be a five-year adoption. So it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 per student per year would be a way to calculate it.
And if I could add around the professional development, we are blessed and lucky to have instructional coaches that are well-versed in these evidence-based practices. And so we are running all the professional development in-house instead of contracting out to others. So for example, the 170 teachers who have signed up for professional development this summer is all being taught by the instructional coaches you see sitting in front of you. So.
Any other questions? Trustee Smith?
Can, I just want to get a little bit more on not, on sort of the feedback loop that trustee Decker was talking about, but that feedback loop is actually, if I understand, was started kind of when we had the committee. Because if, can I find out if there were teachers that were doing Daily 5, for instance? That were on the committee that were able to provide some feedback? Because the committee was, what, a year and a half? Started a year and a half ago?
Yes, about 50 hours worth of committee work. Would that be accurate? And there were teachers that were utilizing it who were part of the committee.
Great, great. So we were able to implement some of their feedback directly into the decision to select these.
That was a significant factor, and I think that's one of the areas that you'd find most staff are most excited about. That was a big selling point for them. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, excuse me, then the recommendation is that the board adopt the recommendation from the English Language Arts Task Force for elementary K5 materials, which include ReadyGen, Daily 5, and the ERLA, which, could you identify what that actually acronym stands for?
Okay, help me out with the acronym.
Put on the spot. Independent Reading Level Assessment. So is there a motion from an elementary trustee to adopt the recommended materials which are identified in our agenda? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
So I'm excited about the idea of there being greater consistency from school to school. I think, you know, kids move around a lot in the district, and as, as they do, they often encounter really different experiences at different schools, sometimes to a level that's pretty startling to parents. And I think the more that we do to make sure that all kids at all schools are being exposed to high-quality teaching processes, then all kids have greater potential to learn. Because what this is about is trying to get great learning experiences to kids. Having said that, it matters that the teachers love what they're doing a lot, because that also drives great learning experiences. And so it matters a lot that the people who had been working with these programs already were enthusiastically supportive of them, that the feedback from both the committee and other elementary teachers has been really positive, because I think it's difficult to adopt something and implement it with enthusiasm and fidelity if you don't feel that that's your choice as a teacher. So for those reasons, I am definitely supporting the adoption, will plan to vote for it, and also really strongly encouraged that the sort of process-oriented work that's, that's taking place and the, that, that need to continually check in, both with student results, obviously, that's what you do, but also with teacher sort of process understanding is, just needs to be baked into the cake going forward.
Trustee Smith?
I just wanted to thank everyone that was on the committee. I know it was a lot of work. Mark just mentioned 50 hours, and I know there's a lot of people on that committee, and so thank you for all the hard work.
Trustee?
I would like to associate myself with the comments of trustees Decker and Smith. And also just to say, this, this issue has probably been one of the toughest, one of the, you know, most difficult for us to wrestle with because of all the public comment. But I, I think that we have probably learned something from this experience, and in particular, Principal Hendrix's comment about communication and the importance of that, you know, and lots of other comments from teachers and parents. I think that we, you know, we're all about learning, so I think we will learn, and we won't make these mistakes again. I also think the work that was done was really impressive and way beyond my ability to understand curriculum. So I do want to say how much I appreciate that. I, I thought briefly about voting against one or, one of these just to sort of make a point, but I think, you know, saying, saying this is making my point, so I'm going to support them also. But it is with the, you know, with the asterisk that I, I, well, I was going to make a comment about the high school part, and I'll save that for the high school agenda item. Okay.
Any other comments from trustees? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then this is an elementary action item. All elementary trustees in favor of the motion to adopt the recommendations of the ELA Task Force for elementary K-5 materials that are identified in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to the elementary trustees present. Then we move on to B2, and so Superintendent Thane, it looks like a comparable discussion, although there's different materials that are recommended to be adopted.
Thank you. Again, the comments that I made previously stand with regard to the grade six through eight recommendation. I think the one piece that's important for me to communicate is, again, two weeks ago, surveyed all 33 of the teachers that teach middle school English Language Arts, and 32 of the 33 responded that they favored the recommendation as presented by the committee. So, again, a number of teachers utilized as a pilot, Engage New York at Middle School during the past year. You'll see that we've got good representation from the middle school administration here, and the three administrators also were unanimous in their support for adoption of Engage New York, grades six through eight.
Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Seeing none. Then, is there a motion from an elementary trustee to adopt the ELA Task Force recommendations for the middle school materials identified in the agenda? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Unless...
I was just going to ditto what I said before, but you guys know all that.
Well, I mean, I think everyone knows that this is, this proposal has elicited a lot of very heartfelt response from the intellectual community of Missoula, and a sense that they don't feel this is right for Missoula. I'm disappointed in the form of the question, because all we can do is vote yea or nay for Engage New York. I don't feel that that's fair to us. The things I've done, I went and reviewed materials, I reviewed Engage New York, and I did not feel that this was just curricular materials. I know, early on, the superintendent said, you know, these are just materials, but this is something more. This is a program, and again, not a curriculum expert, but we get letters from educators and university people and parents, and there's just such a strong feeling that they don't want to see us go down this road. And so, you know, I hear, I hear very strong concern about this type of programming, the scripted nature of it, you know, and I've heard, you know, one of these emails said, well, the scripts would be handy if you were absent, this sub could use it, that sort of thing. But I only hear sort of tepid support for it. I hear, well, we all worked together, everybody worked hard, we want to respect the work, but I don't, the level of concern that people have about this is really concerning to me, and I don't want to vote yea or nay, I don't want to vote yea on this thing. I get the message, the message from the administration is, we're going to, we're doing it anyway, so that's fine. I'm sure that we, I wish the form of the question was, do you want to adopt this now or spend another year, you know, working through this, working out the committee concerns, trying to figure out where the concerns lie, see if there's a way we can take what we like about Engage New York, but bring it home to Missoula, make it more our own. The grade school proposal had three parts, which made me feel solid that it was, you know, that it had parts. We have three middle schools, and two of them don't have other programs, two of them don't have IB and language immersion, and so they only have this. It just, and it just feels so, it reminds me of when first No Child Left Behind first came out in the Houston Miracle, and if we take away all the distractions and we point the kids at the test, we'll get them there. And I wish that the other two elementaries had some other things to bring to bear to kind of soften Engage New York. So I just, I don't want us to vote for this. And the administration said that they will, they are using it. I have concerns about tracking of students, I have concerns about tracking of teachers, I have concerns about students getting tracked into high school, which I've already addressed to the administration, that once they become Engage New York students, they just kind of get tracked through. So I have serious concerns. We get letters from very well-meaning people who have very serious concerns, so I just don't want us to vote for this. I think, I wish we weren't asked to make that decision.
Trustee Decker?
I share a lot of trustee Lorenzen's concerns, and I think it might be better for me to say more about that when we talk about the high school piece, but I think these things are very interrelated, and so it's difficult to separate them. And I think it's been difficult in the public conversation to keep them at all separate as well. At the high school level, program, schools that have classes that are doing IB, so IB English does not have to, would not have been using these, it's my understanding that in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, all students taking English Language would be doing similar things. And so from an equity sort of perspective, I like the idea of all three middle schools working together to share best practices, because I share serious concerns about, about tracking, and about equity, and about differential experiences that kids might have, depending on which school they go to. So I like the idea that all English teachers at the middle school level would have the opportunity to work together around a shared set of materials, that they all seem to be pretty enthusiastic about using. So from that perspective, I feel differently about the six to eight adoption than I would if we were being asked tonight to consider the nine to 12 adoption, which we aren't, for the very reasons that trustee Lorenzen raises. I think the public dialogue has been a bit buffeting and overwhelming to those of us on this side of receiving all of it. And, my gosh, like, thank you, please weigh in on everything about schools with as much enthusiasm. It's great to know that you care, and that you want to reach out to us, because we really only hear what we hear. And what I didn't hear was a lot of concern around the six to eight adoption. I didn't hear it in the public comment. I heard a lot of concern around the nine to 12 pieces. And so, I take that input really seriously, but I also am separating out what I'm hearing from both the public and the teachers.
Trustee Smith?
Thank you, trustee Decker. I'm glad you pointed that out, and I feel the same way as what you just said. And I also have seen much more than tepid support, some of the elementary, or middle school teachers that have been doing this have praised it and have, we do have some middle school teachers with some experience with this, who have said that they have seen the success of the program, or of the materials, I should say. And I have some other things that I also, I think that Grace touched on, that I will save for the high school discussion as well, but I definitely agree that it's different. The comments that I've seen are, that are not for it, are almost universally reflected or have some comment or reference to high school, so I'll save that discussion for a little later.
Thanks. Any other trustee conversation? So we have a seconded motion, I believe. Is that right, Flora? Okay. And so, any public comment on this at all?
There, there we go. I'm on. Thank you. My name is Lisa Hendricks, and I'm principal of CS Porter Middle School, and I sent you a letter that you found in your board packet, and I just would like to take this opportunity to read it to you. Dear trustees, I wish to address the current curriculum review process and to contrast it to the previous process to highlight the benefits of our current practice, as well as remind us of the challenges the previous process produced. As one of the longest-tenured administrators in the district, I am intimately familiar with the nuances of the district's past practices, the research and professional learning the district has provided over the last dozen years, and the evolution of the district's mission to progress our actions toward providing our community with a guaranteed and viable curriculum. In 2010, the district embarked on a shift in daily instructional practice from individual teacher practice to professional learning communities. The premise of this research is that from school to school, course to course, standard to standard, what students are learning from teacher A's classroom should be more similar than not from what students are learning in teacher B's classroom. That what students are learning should not be a lottery of who gets the best teacher, but the district has a moral obligation to provide high-quality education in every classroom. This shift to PLC placed collaboration at the forefront of all instructional practices. Our vision statement begins, "We communicate, we collaborate." It is a commitment voiced and reiterated frequently to guide our work. Previous to introducing PLCs in the district, the curriculum review process was a week-long workshop at some of the most, was a week-long workshop of some of the most dedicated teachers in the district. The teachers took a week from the summertime off to provide their best professional expertise in reviewing the most recent curriculum products publishers were providing for their content. They were paid for their time during the summer. They would spend part of the week plowing through curriculum products, weigh the strengths and weaknesses of each, and select what, in their professional opinion, was the curriculum materials best suited for the district. However, because this work took place during the summer vacation, some of our strongest teachers were unavailable. The challenges to this process would then become evident when all teachers returned to school at the end of summer break. The teachers who were not on the curriculum review team were unfamiliar with the curriculum materials purchased over the summer. Many materials were stacked on shelves and left untouched as teachers hung on to the products they were more familiar with from their previous curriculum adoption. Some teachers felt the decisions were made in a vacuum, and that the district wasted valuable financial resources in purchasing materials that teachers just did not know how to use. Contrast that process to the PLC model in current use. The task force process provided ample opportunities for members of the task force to communicate and to collaborate with teachers on their team, at their school, and across the district over a two-year timeframe. Their work is front-loaded with identifying priority standards before identifying curriculum materials. During the past year, many teachers were able to pilot some of the products under consideration. The publishing of curriculum materials, which has changed dramatically over the last decade, now produces online products and provides numerous avenues to curriculum materials. In the past, materials came packaged in a box set, which made it convenient to pruse the materials in their entirety. This is not the current landscape, and to thoroughly research the curriculum products and their instructional use is multifaceted. In my opinion, we are where we are today due to the breakdown in communication. I believe there are members of the task for, that task force that did not attend meetings during the most critical times during the deep dive of curriculum materials. Therefore, these members did not communicate to their teams, their schools, or the task force their concerns about Engage New York curriculum, curriculum materials. The remaining members of the task force moved forward. In schools where task force members did communicate and collaborate, we see strong support for the dedicated professionals on the task force, the curriculum review process, and the selection of Engage New York materials. In my opinion, the process or the curriculum materials are not the problem, the lack of communication by all task force members is the foundational problem which has led us to this situation. I want to urge the school board trustees, the administration, and the union to strive to improve communication. As I have listened to our staff at CS Porter, who strongly support the selection of Engage New York, this is what has been communicated to me. There is a high level of respect for the teachers on the ELA Task Force for their professional dedication and their expertise and instructional practice of the English Language Arts content. The Engage New York materials provide ample materials for differentiation, extensions for the higher-level learner, and support for the struggling learner. Porter teachers voiced that they see possible use of the scripted lessons for those days when they will be absent from the classroom, and they can use that module for substitute lesson plans, and then use non-scripted designs for their regular daily instruction. Porter teachers voiced the benefits of all teachers across the district collaborating and improving their instructional practice once they are all using the same curriculum materials. And Porter teachers voiced the concerns of the actions of the leadership of the teachers' union during this debate over the curriculum review process. Opinions have been shared with me that the union leadership is dividing its members instead of uniting its members, that teachers were interrupted during instruction to take part of a survey in which the purpose was not adequately communicated, and that afterwards they wished they would have responded differently. I want to strongly encourage the trustees to adopt Engage New York as the ELA curriculum materials for MCPS, and as we move forward, encourage administration and the union leadership to strive to continue to improve our communication and collaboration, so that the progress we've made over the last dozen years continues. We are an amazing district, and I know that we will continue to provide the best education for our students, their families, and our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this agenda item?
I'm Christina Stevens, and I feel like a duck out of water, because I've been the principal at Meadow Hill, so I speak about middle school, but I'm going to be the principal at Jeanette Rankin. So I have a little bit of both, and obviously, I'm more familiar with one than the other. I'm Christina. I've been the principal at Meadow Hill for the last six years, a lot shorter than Lisa. I was very pleased with the ELA adoption process. I had two students from my building, or two students, two teachers from my building apply to be a part of the district ELA task force. Both of my teachers are highly respected teachers, and they were, they both applied, went through the process, and were accepted. I had a seventh grade and an eighth grade teacher. And I'm saying these things because I keep hearing the communication piece, and I do believe that's a part of our problem. So obviously, on my staff, I didn't have a sixth-grade member. This process was really familiar to me, because I went through this process when we chose the STAR 360 screener assessment for the district. I was a part of that process. So as being a district principal, I would go back to my building and share along the way. So I felt like the whole adoption of STAR 360 went so smooth, and I knew that this was the same process for ELA. All schools were represented, and all participants were able to research the options available and to be part of the selection of materials. When I surveyed my ELA staff on Engage New York ELA adoption, the vote was unanimous in our building, eight-zero in favor of adoption. Even though I did not have sixth-grade representation, they piloted Engage New York, and they were very excited about it in the spring. But I did hear from my sixth-grade staff that they felt like they were a little bit behind. And so that's, again, that piece, that I didn't have representation. But in middle school, we really don't have any excuses, because they meet weekly in their curricular areas. And so I said, all my staff collaborates in their curricular PLCs weekly, and this curriculum would allow my staff to continue to grow together, to ensure that students are consistently being taught the prioritized standards, not only in our building, but throughout the district. Lisa and I and Casey all planned our early-out calendars together to ensure that our middle school teachers have time to get together as a whole district. So, as for the elementary, I'm excited to work together with my new staff and to learn all about ReadyGen, DAILY-5, and the ERLA. I know that my teachers are thrilled to have a district-wide common curriculum pathways, because I've got all the feedback from the past principal, but they're concerned with adequate PD and the opportunity to review the materials, and I know that many of them have already signed up for the trainings. I also know that I'm going to do some of my own PD training tomorrow, talk about, that's why I'm the fish out of water, on DAILY-5, and I'm excited to join in the staff with my work in August. And together with Robyn Nuttall, we've already scheduled time for our teachers to dig into the ReadyGen. So that's already been expressed in the stuff that I have got from, feedback from the teachers, and we've already planned it for August. And I just can't say enough, you know, about everybody here with our district, because they're not, they're so supportive of us and the teachers. So we have already planned that. At Cold Springs, I saw that 15 teachers were in support and four who were not. One staff member did not vote, and another staff member is moving to the middle school, so she didn't share her opinion either way. I did see in the comments some frustration by staff and not feeling like they were a part of the process, again, the communication, but again, the majority of the staff was for. But I do think building principals and task committee members have learned from this experience, and will involve staff along the way as we move forward with math curriculum adoption. I think we've learned a lot about it. I just want to say thank you to Elise and to the entire Teaching and Learning Department. The instructional coaches and Elise have been so helpful with moving our district in the right direction. It is imperative that students have the same opportunity to learn not only in every classroom, but also at every school in every classroom. I feel strongly that every student should have the same opportunity to learn the prioritized standards in every content area at every level. standards in every content area at every level. I know when I started in this district 25 years ago, there were three ELA teachers in seventh grade, and two were magnificent. They had this amazing reputation for being amazing, and then there was me, who got hired the day before school started. And I just remember thinking, "Oh, I wish I knew what they were doing in their classroom." And I borrowed, I begged, I stole ideas from these teachers. And that's not what we have anymore in Missoula. We're collaborative. Those new teachers come in, they have team members that they get to work with, and I just -- they have time provided for them. And I just remember feeling so isolated on this island that my kids that I was teaching ELA, was I giving them the right -- was I giving them the right, you know, information? Because I know when I got hired, there wasn't even enough books. So it was kind of like, "Okay, you got these kids for 90 minutes for ELA? Good luck." And I really struggled until I finally said -- went to one of those teachers and I said, "I need help. I want to make sure I'm doing a good job with these students." And so I feel like the framework that we've established in the last 25 years is going -- is setting up all teachers and all students to be successful. So I'm just appreciative of the long hours and research that our ELA task committee has done to choose these materials for our district. So I hope that you're in support of that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
Hi. I'm Pam Wright. I'm principal at Rattlesnake Elementary and wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I -- we've been using Engage New York in fifth grade at Rattlesnake just because we have pieces -- we don't have all the pieces that we need to deliver to the standards that we have. And I just want to say, when I hear that it's scripted, first and foremost, when -- it's not an easy thing. It's not like you could just roll it out of the box and use it. Teachers talk about how complicated it is to prepare. And when I started walking into these classrooms, I saw an energy and excitement that I have not seen anywhere else. So I think that part about being engaging, and it comes back to the content, it comes back to the text choices, and it comes back to the tools for the teacher to raise the bar for kids. So kids were excited, kids were engaged, and the other thing that was notable for me, every student could participate. Kids weren't leaving the room for alternative assignments. The tools are in there to scaffold and do what you need to do so 100% of your kids can participate and be successful. And I've been in education for close to 20 years, and it is a very powerful tool. And so when I keep hearing it called scripted, I think of something that you could open up, you know, and just hand to a substitute or just use out of the box, and that's not the case with this. The texts are beautiful, the books are beautiful, and just the ideas are big and this. So I just feel like I have to speak as somebody who's seen it in progress for a year, and we've gotten great results. We have kids that were really struggling, that are excited to come to school, and are better readers, better mathematicians, and we use some of it for math. And it becomes more real life, like instead of doing a worksheet, you're designing a hotel, and you're -- you have a budget, and you're buying furniture. So it's anything but what I think of when I think of a scripted program, so.
Thanks. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing, going once, twice. Seeing none, then there is a seconded motion, and this is an elementary trustee action item. So all those trustees in favor of adopting the recommendation of the ELA task force for the middle school materials identified in our agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. That's trustee Smith, trustee Decker, trustee Kendall, trustee Newbold, all those opposed, and that's trustee Lorenzen. So the motion passes. Then we move on to number three, which is information-only. So trust -- or trustee, sorry. Superintendent Thane, if you want to provide, there is a brief background description, but if you want to explain what's going to be happening at the high school level this coming year?
Thank you. And normally, we would not bring this forward. However, in light of all the conversation that's occurred with regard to high school ELA, I felt it important to apprise not only the trustees but the public of where we stand. So again, there's been a great amount of feedback with regard to the committee recommendation for Engage New York. And I think it's important that we do take time to reflect on that recommendation and to gain some additional experience, particularly at the high school level. So as you've heard referenced earlier, we have done some pilots at the elementary and middle school, and that's something that we have not, to a large degree, conducted at the high school prior to coming forward with the recommendations. And I think it's more important for us to get this right than to adopt at all three levels at the same time. So from an administrative perspective, I think it's important that we take a step back, that we afford high school teachers who are looking for the opportunity to opt in and to utilize the Engage New York materials to do so. Over the course of the next year, what I would anticipate happening is for us to gain both some quantitative but largely some qualitative data about that use. We have right now 20 high school teachers who teach ELA and special education who have requested the opportunity to opt in. And I wouldn't characterize all of them necessarily as people who are opting in because they're in full support of the program, but I think there are some people who has also opted in because they want to learn more about the program. And I think that's really important, and it's an important consideration. So just as we've done in the elementary and the middle schools, our intent would be during the 2018-19 school year to support those teachers who wish to opt in and utilize the materials and take them for a test drive. And then, over the course of next winter, you have the conversations that are necessary to determine if, in fact, that's a recommendation that we would advance to the trustees next spring, or if we need to step back and take a look at other considerations at that point in time. So I do, again, appreciate the work. I appreciate those who are looking to opt in, and I want to reinforce one point about that. There's a significant commitment of time and energy on the part of those individuals that are opting in, and they understand that essentially this is a pilot. And if we go a different direction next year, they will have invested a lot of time and energy and work that will benefit their kids this year but is really representative of a professional sacrifice that they would make to pilot the materials and to test the materials. So I think it's commendable that they're willing to invest the time and energy to pilot the materials, to learn, and again, to continue to develop their craft. So regardless of what outcome we might have next year with regard to any potential recommendations, I do believe that those that participate will, again, develop additional tools and skills that will support them regardless of what recommendation is advanced next year. So the administration at this point is not advancing a recommendation with regard to high school materials. Again, just feeling we'll support those that want to pilot Engage New York and will continue with conversation throughout the school year with the intent of hopefully coming to the board with a recommendation for the entire district in the spring of 2019.
Any questions for trustee Deck?
So the question is, can you talk a little bit about how professional development, PLCs, collaboration, how's that going to work with some folks involved in this, in Engage New York and some folks who aren't? Are there going to be two cohort of cohorts? Are there going to be opportunities for cross-pollination and sharing between people who are and aren't? What's that going to look like?
That will be a little bit of a challenge, but I think actually it's got potential to be a great learning journey. So again, today, 12 high school English Language Arts teachers participated in professional development activity and took the opportunity to start looking in depth at the Engage New York materials and how if they do determine to pilot, they'll utilize them in the classroom. Will continue to support them with ongoing professional development, as was referenced in some of the comments. It's not something you can just roll out. It's not something you can just pull the shrink wrap off a binder and start utilizing. It is an investment of significant time and energy. Again, you know, I would come back to my initial comments before the K5 agenda item, and that is, there's a significant transition that's occurred in terms of expectations between what we would just commonly refer to as traditional literature and informational and technical text. And that's a difficult transition for many people to fully comprehend. So I think part of our mission is to go back and talk about the compelling why, too. And I think that's conversation that can occur in PLCs, and regardless of whether a person participates in the pilot this year or not, I think that's something we need to continue to attend to in classrooms. So I would suggest to you that there would be some cohorts within buildings that will be using the materials, some that may not be using the materials. We have at this point one high school where everybody has opted in, so that'll be a different dynamic than a high school where only some have opted in, and so you might have parallel tracks. But again, I think there's potential that everyone can inform one another, and I think it is really important that we ask the difficult questions and that we come to have a greater understanding about how the students respond to the materials, because that's really what's critical. It is important, obviously, teachers feel good about the materials that they have to support teaching to the standards and the benchmarks, but the student response to the materials is going to be really critical, too.
Any other questions, trustee Lorenzen?
No, I know we had an email conversation, but that wasn't public. I'm very concerned about tracking. I'm very, very concerned about tracking. And now that the kids are coming out of, will be coming out of middle school in an Engage New York format, and what I'd asked was, when they get to high school, how are they assigned to ninth-grade English now? Will that change? And, you know, and will, how can the board be sure that kids aren't getting tracked from sort of hand-selected into different courses? I know I'm most familiar with Hellgate High School because the real question after ninth grade is 10th grade, and 10th grade is where you hit honors. And at Hellgate, certain classrooms feed the honors program. So knowledgeable parents will know how to get their kid in the track for the honors because the honors pretty much feeds the IB program and, to some extent, the AP program. And I assume that goes on at the other schools. And so how can we as a board know that, you know, what metric are we going to get to show us that these kids aren't getting tracked for life based on having been in an Engage New York classroom in middle school?
And I think you made an important point, and that is, we do not, in our high schools, have the honors designation for any of our freshman English Language Arts classes. So generally speaking, unless a student has an IEP that might call for a differentiated program, those students that come in as freshmen are somewhat randomly assigned to their English Language Arts. So again, just as with K5, we wouldn't say that Ready Gen tracked students into a particular middle school program. I would say the same is true with the adoption of Engage New York at the middle school. It's not tracking anybody into a specific program or track at high school. So student performance as freshmen in their English Language Arts classes largely drives who's then recommended for and placed in honors classes as they transition to the sophomore year. That's a practice that's gone on for a number of years. We also have students, of course, who have been identified through the compass program, students that may need that differentiation and challenge on the other end. That differentiation is largely accomplished through the regular classroom, the regular English Language Arts assignment as freshmen before they get the opportunity to experience honors track or IB or AP classrooms. And I think I appreciated Pam Wright's comment about how you scaffold and how you're able to differentiate within curriculum. That's a huge task for teachers, but it's a task we ask of them routinely. It's about meeting all the students where their needs are and making sure that we advance all students. And it's really about a growth mindset and providing opportunities for those students to experience continued growth.
Any other questions, trustee Lorenzen?
Continuation. So at the, next year, in some of this, and I think Hellgate has, will have some ready -- some, not Ready Gen, Engage New York classrooms and some current classrooms, will we be able to know at the end of next year what percentage of kids going into honors English came out of Ready Gen or Engage New York classrooms, and which percent came out of the traditional classrooms? Is that information the board can have?
I'm certain we could try and disaggregate the data. I would say that if the numbers hold, though, at the present time, I believe all Hellgate English teachers have actually opted into the pilot for Engage New York. So you look at a situation like that, it's going to be different than a situation that might occur at one of the other two comprehensive high schools where there might be that distinction, but we could certainly do that. I would also mention that both Seeley and Willard have ELA staff that have determined they want to opt in also.
Can we comment or ask questions? Sure. Make your comment. Yeah, go ahead and comment. That's fine. It's information-only. It's informational. Okay. Okay. So I have, I have three comments, uh, four comments. The first is that I'm really thankful that we are not being asked, as I said before, to vote on this now because, because clearly there is a lot more to explore and to learn and to figure out, which speaks to one of my comments or concerns, which is that going forward, I want to really make sure that if we're treating this as an open question, that it is. And I think if we move into the year with the idea that teachers who are opting in will have a level of support and input and sort of backing that teachers who are not opting in do not have in what it is that they're pursuing, it's not as much of an open question as it might be. And I just really want to say that if we're taking time to explore, it can't just be taking time to convince. And we have to just be transparent and clear and authentic about that. And I know that that means that, to a certain extent, some of the work that's been done feels like we're taking a step back, and that's frustrating for people who put in so much time, and I get that. But that is where we are. We do need to take a step back, and we do need to actually engage that conversation because if this is the right decision, it'll be the right decision in a year, like if this is the right way to go and the best move for kids. And we'll have more data to make that decision. So that's my comment number one. Like, if this is an open question, it needs to be an open question. My second point is that it's going to be really important to get that quantitative and qualitative data from students about what's going on. And I'm not sure right now what, how we do that. There'll be a lot to tease apart as far as that goes, so good luck. We look forward to hearing from you, right? Because that's going to be a tricky thing to try to figure out, as well as qualitative and quantitative data from teachers about what it's taking for them and what they're getting out of the experience. So, I mean, good luck. And then my third thing is about this 70% technical. One of the concerns that came up over and over was about the dearth of novels. And I think it's really awesome that people felt compelled, again, to speak out about that because I think it speaks to the way that English in high school touches people's hearts in a way that shapes, like, their lives forever. People learn to be pleasure readers, they learn, they're exposed to things. All of that's so important, and education that touches the heart is so critical. And I think that that piece of information, that 70% of what students are reading by the time they're seniors in high school should be technical and informational, that may be true, but I think, for me, I have questions now about, does that mean that that all happens in the English Language class? Because reading is happening all across the board, of course. It's happening in science, it's happening in history, it's happening in social studies, it's happening in your foreign language, it's happening all over the place. And so that, I have a lot to learn more about what's going on at the high school level because those pieces of the Engage New York curriculum give me serious, serious pause in a way that they don't at younger levels.
Trustee Smith?
I have a few comments, too. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to address them kind of in reverse order to what Grace just said. Regarding the 70% technical aspect of it, as an engineer, when I got to college, I really wished I had a heck of a lot more technical expertise in my English Language Arts. We didn't have it. Eventually, my college got smart and required all freshmen to take technical writing, at least. I don't know if you're aware of this, but engineers are chronically terrible authors of any.
Let's say about Hellgate High School.
Yeah, I should clarify there, that they graduated high school in 1984, I should say. It's getting better. It's getting better. But so that, when I hear that about the technical writing or reading and understanding, I think it's a step in the right direction. I don't know what the magic number is, 70%. It definitely, in my mind, needs to be more. So I think that's a step in the right direction regarding that. The second thing I'll touch on... The second thing I'll touch on is, I think, I really, and we touched on this a little bit earlier in the meeting tonight, I really appreciate all the feedback from teachers, parents, former students, other people within the system that aren't students or teachers, but everybody, I really appreciate that. I, as Grace said, I want to keep hearing from you guys, and I hope all that energy gets put into a real useful evaluation of this material. And the reason I say it that way is because I hear quite often, over and over again, in a lot of these letters and emails that I'm receiving, are the references to the canned curriculum, the scripted teaching lessons. And as Pam and Lisa just pointed out to us, those, I think what that is, that's a way to kind of, to poke holes into something and to use a catchphrase or a word that is frightening and using it wrong. From what I'm hearing from some of the teachers that have used these things, it's not scripted. It is not a canned quote-unquote curriculum. And I really don't even know what canned curriculum means. Boxed might be a better word, but either way, it's just not, what I'm hearing is that the evaluation is not. I put an awful lot of trust and belief in the team that we have put together that includes everybody, all the staff at MCPS. And when this group goes out, a subset of our teachers has gone out and worked very hard and made a recommendation that, I'm assuming none of you were paid by Engage New York, and I'm just going to go right on and say, none of you were. I'm not even going to assume that, I know that for a fact. So this is, this is, I, I'm glad that you guys did this, and I take your expertise to heart, and I support this direction that we're going. That said, I agree, again, with Grace, that I really appreciate another year to allay some of these fears, which takes me to my last point. During this year, and I'm going to hope and encourage the PLCs, the department heads, the teaching coaches, to really kind of get down to these issues and keep an eye and maybe make a list of what we're, what we're focusing on. Some of the comments that are, are in there, the teachers not having an ability to use their skills that we know that they can do, and the feeling from a lot of these emails is like, well, it doesn't matter what kind of teacher I have, I have to get this can or this box and open it up and lay it out, and a robot could do it, even a stupid engineer could do it. But I don't believe that, I don't believe that, and I hope that we can address those points. Those are the issues and the items that we focus on as we move forward in this. And if we find out that it is, in fact, not all it's cracked up to be, and it limits our teachers, then we do have to have that ability to pull it. And I think that there is, I'm not afraid to pull it. We can talk about cost, we've already talked about that in other meetings. We know that this is, the materials are, the material, like the paper and stuff, isn't free, but the, the program that we've gotten so far is certainly not, it's free. And Mark, can you verify that for me before I speak out of turn? It's not, it's not that the, we have to buy papers, obviously, and to print out stuff, but we're not putting a down payment on, for instance?
No. So a couple of comments. First of all, the Engage New York materials are a free resource. We will print and put together binders for those staff members to use, so there'll be some print costs. And then there are some materials, some novel sets and such, that we will purchase to support those teachers and teaching.
Right, we would, I would think we would use paper and novels to teach, regardless of whichever program that we are using. I guess that's, that's all I want to say. And I think I just said it, but I, I do appreciate the, the extra year and then, oh, I guess I'll turn this a little bit into a question. I know that our curriculum review is, I think on our webpage, it says we're on a five or five to six-year schedule. This stretches this English Language review to a five to six-year schedule. We don't have a policy, there's no decision we have to make at the end of six years, or is there?
Actually, what we're required to do is go through the review every five years. And we have reviewed the standards and the benchmarks, we've identified the priority standards, so we have met technically the obligation. What, again, we're about tonight is having conversation about putting the right materials in the hands of teachers to teach to those standards and benchmarks.
All right, good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't forcing our hand next year. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any trustee? Trustee Kendall and then trustee Newbold?
I think that evaluation and data issues are really important in this, and some of the public comment that we got referred to the FAQs that are on the website. And I, I think that having that on the website is a real service, but there was that one question that said, we'll, we'll provide some more information about the data that support Engage New York. So I think if we can get that filled in, you know, both presently and in the future, when we know more and more data has been gathered, that would, that would be great. That would be really responsive to that particular concern. And I, you know, I, I can't speak as eloquently about this as Grace can as a kind of person who has some teaching background, and I don't. But we do all come at this with our own personal history and how we felt about how we were taught and how we learned. And like a lot of other people, I really loved my English teachers in high school, and they made such huge impressions on me at Hellgate. Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Wayland, Mr. Demmons, I'm probably forgetting a few, but, you know, and we did read books. We read books, and they were really hard. I really didn't like McTeague. But lots of the other ones I did. And regardless of whether I liked the book or not, there was always a lot to be learned. So, you know, I think we all, especially those of us who are older, have that filter, and the importance of learning technical writing, that was not anything that ever meant anything to me. But I appreciate that that is super important in today's world. So anyway, it's, this is difficult, and it is good that we did get public comment, and I didn't mean to imply that that was what was difficult about it. It's just that there, you know, this is something that's a little bit out of the realm of most trustees, and we do have to rely on the recommendations that we get. I also am not sure if it has been important, as we've looked at curriculum adoption now and in the past, is that something that's required by state law? I under, it is. Boards, boards of trustees need to, okay. So there is some level of kind of political stuff here that we need to be part of. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Newbold?
I think this is similar to the comments about the evaluation and feedback loop, the quantitative and qualitative data that we'll gather over the next year. And I just wanted to encourage, I guess along the lines of what Mike was saying, for the group to pay particular attention to some of the things that we're interested in hearing about. And for me, that is the feedback from teachers who are piloting the program about the level of flexibility that the program allows, because the, the comments that most resonated for me involved the lack of novel studies. And I really, I understand the transition that we are making and why we are making that. I still have huge reservations and just kind of fundamentally disagree with this whole notion that we are kind of shifting away from just studying the humanities in general, it feels like, because I feel that in order to be a good citizen and to be culturally aware and to have empathy and to understand other perspectives, that that piece of our education is critical. And in that type of study, that is where we really develop sound, critical thinking skills. And so I'm interested to hear how this program allows us to maybe incorporate more than what the program already provides. And then my other question about that is, if we are having to be very flexible, how does the program provide a benefit in the first place? If we're having to kind of really reimagine it and reconfigure it, is it a good program to begin with? So that's what I'll be most interested in hearing about as we make our way through the next year.
Any other board comments or questions? Trustee Decker?
Nope.
Okay, just to make sure that you knew that we were still aware that you're there. Thank you for participating.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, well, we can go to public comment, or we can go to superintendent comment, and then we'll do it.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge a couple of your comments. First of all, you hit it on the nose, trustee Decker, and that is, this is not the sole province of English Language Arts teachers. Teaching, reading, and writing across the curriculum, whether it's in the social sciences or the hard sciences, et cetera, is critical, and that's part of the work we need to do. And we have great teachers in all those departments, but that's not the area in which they've been primarily trained. But part of the shift to informational text doesn't necessarily imply that that's only in the English Language Arts domain, but that is across the curriculum. So thank you for pointing that out. Several of you referenced that this has been difficult, and I want to acknowledge that. And I think it's difficult because it's so important and it's such a value that we as a community and as a school district have. So I think that's a good thing, that it's been difficult. And I think that, for the most part, this has been a conversation that we probably have need to have. And so I also thank you for that. But I would close by saying the bottom line for all of us, whether it's the people who authored the letters, whether it's the staff members who made public comment, or whether it's the task force who made the presentation, all of us share a common goal, and that is the best outcome for students. And if we remain focused on that as we go through the next year and continue to study, I'm confident we're going to come out well.
Any public comment?
Okay, I wasn't going to say anything. And just so you know, I wasn't even a part of the high school one, so I don't know what they went through, I was part of the other one.
And so if you can state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lindsay Morris. I'm a new teacher instructional coach. And I guess this kind of is like a personal thing to me, because most of my friends don't even know this, but I was a struggling reader in high school and middle school. I was the one given the book. I was told, read this book. There was no point in it, there was no anything for me. And I would be interested to see, too, how many of our students that have these books handed to them, the 24 that was stated before, how many of them actually read them? How many of them get online and read the facts? I did. I didn't have those, remember the little Cliff Notes? That's how I survived. That's how I got through college, everything, because I couldn't read. I taught myself how to read when I taught kindergarten as a teacher. I taught myself the phonics and everything else, but I got through because I learned how to get through. And so when I hear all of this, my first thing, my first eight years was in Nampa, Idaho, where we were extremely free and reduced. My class had 90% free and reduced, and in a class of 36, because we didn't have limits there, we, I had 12 kids that were homeless at one point. So I love that you guys are passionate, that you're listening to the public comment and stuff, but when I see the 61% and I see that are passing high school, I don't look at it as, hey, we have 61%. I think we're letting 39% go. And a lot of teachers, when we get to high school, they don't know how to teach us the fundamental skills that we need when we can't, when we can't read, because they weren't taught like that. It's an elementary system that teaches you the fundamental skills. So I also would like you to think about those kids, because their parents are not writing you letters. They are not writing you letters from a college as a junior or wherever else, because they might have dropped out. 90% of kids who drop out can't read. So I just ask, because we all say, like, what about the gifted kids? When are they going to get into this? What about the books to read? The kids that are gifted and that are on benchmark, they're going to read anyways. They're going to read that book and another book, and if we give them the article and say, you can read this passage out of the book, or you can read the whole book, they're going to read the whole book. It's mostly for those kids that need that. It's for the kids that are not going to read the whole book, but they'd read the three pages of the passage. They're going to get more out of that than anything, and our dropout rate is going to drop, and our success rate is going to get higher because we're actually stepping back. And so I love your passion for it, but I've read all the comments, I've been to the public comments. No, not one teacher has brought up the point of those kids. Not, nobody in the public has brought up those kids, and that's my concern. That's, they are my passion, because I was once that kid. I just ask that you guys keep an eye on them and not the ones that going into the gifted program or going into the honors. What about those kids that are, could make it if we gave them the tools to make it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, well, thank you all for participating, and then we'll move on to items nine, A1, and two. And I'll just suggest that since one is an elementary action item and one's a secondary or high school, or high school item, if, Pat, you can discuss them together, if that's okay with trustees. We'll have to vote on them separately, but it seems like it's a fairly redundant conversation if we keep them completely apart. So if that's okay with trustees, as I look around, everyone seems to think that's fine. Okay.
All right, thank you. So this is typically the time of year when we would have a discussion about budget amendments, and typically it relates to the transportation fund or the retirement fund. Both agenda items are transportation fund-related. Back in August, we adopted, the board adopted budgets in the elementary and the high school for the transportation fund. The elementary budget was 3.9 million, the high school budget was 2.1 million. We're at the, nearing the end of the fiscal year, which ends the end of this month, and looking at our expenditures through, from those funds, we're recommending that we pull into reserves via a budget amendment here, 138,000 in the elementary and 30,000 in the high school. Basically, we have, we're allowed to have 20% reserves. We don't have that. We have about 4.9% elementary and about 13 high school. The reserves are in place to provide for this opportunity or for this situation. For the elementary budget, we, at the time we adopted the budget, we hadn't settled our contract with Beach, so that contract was a little more expensive than we estimated when we adopted budgets. And we added a route, which is in the 40-plus-thousand range, and then we initiated some MBI training, also via the negotiated agreement with, with Beach. So those factors contributed to the additional costs in the elementary. In the high school, we didn't add an additional route, but we did have the similar issue with the negotiated agreement with, with Beach being a little different than what we estimated in August. So that's the rationale, and the amounts aren't huge, but important to make sure we get through the year.
Trustee Smith?
Pat, I'm glad to hear that the Beach staff got some MBI training. I think, I remember a long time, or not that long ago, but we were talking about that. On that MBI training, did we pay 100% for that, or did Beach participate in some of the cost for them?
I believe we pay 100% of the cost.
For their staff to do that?
Correct.
Any other questions? Trustee Kendall?
I would actually like to hear more about how the MBI training works.
Before we do that, can I interject a question? If we can explain to the public what the initials MBI mean, since we're so acronym-heavy and it, it has no meaning unless you understand what it is.
Where's Carol Ewen when you need her? So, MBI is Montana Behavior Initiative, and so this is a discipline effort that's been put in place in the schools, and the transportation of students to schools, such an extension of the school. And the transportation of students to schools, such an extension of the school they really, that Carol and her folks met with us, and we talked about the advantages and benefits would be gained if bus drivers were trained in MBI. So there is some consistency for students when they're on the bus, when they're loading, unloading, riding, and when they're in school. So it has evolved into a consistent message for students from a discipline standpoint.
I just want to say how wonderful that is. I'm really glad to hear it.
And just to follow up, to make sure that I understand, Montana Behavior Initiative is essentially one that's trying to make sure kids have positive attitudes, that they understand what bullying is, when to report bullying, how to deal with things like that, and just try to take out some of the elements that make school really scary for kids?
You may think of it as pro-social behavior.
Okay. And so I echo what trustee Kendall said about, that's great, because I know how much time a lot of kids spend on buses getting to and from school. Any other questions? Pat? Seeing none. Then we'll deal with A1 first. It's a recommendation that the trustees approve the Budget Amendment Proclamation 2018-15E in the amount of $138,000 for the Elementary Transportation Fund. Is there a motion stating that from any elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is it seconded? Seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Other than some of the positions that were stated earlier. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the Budget Amendment Proclamation 2018-15E in the amount of $138,000 for the Elementary Transportation Fund, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then two is the parallel recommendation that the trustees approve the Budget Amendment Proclamation 2018-13S in the amount of $30,000 for the High School Transportation Fund. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the Budget Amendment Proclamation 2018-13S in the amount of $30,000 for the High School Transportation Fund, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Decker?
Yes.
Great. That's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then Burley, if you don't mind perhaps talking about three and four in the same fashion, because one is, and it involves another acronym, F, F, and E, which I had never heard of before. But, and then we'll actually have the vote out separately, because one's elementary and one's high school. Does that work, Burley? Any problems with that, trustees? Seeing none. Okay.
Yeah, this is for permission to solicit bids for the fixtures, furniture and equipment for the remaining, remaining bond projects that we have coming up. We contract typically through our architects that have been awarded those projects to work with staff and administration of those facilities and look at what kind of new fixtures, furniture and equipment they will need for the finish of their project. And for the elementary side, we have Hawthorne Elementary, Lewis and Clark, CS Porter, Meadow Hill and Washington. On the high school side, we have Big Sky and Willard and the Egg Processing Kitchen. And Sentinel High School, sorry.
Pardon?
And Sentinel High School, sorry.
Okay. Oh, got it. Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to grant permission to solicit fixtures, furniture and equipment bids?
I do have one question.
Okay, sure.
Thanks. I guess my question is, now we've had a few schools that have been sort of living with their new stuff for a while, and I know that some of the teachers at Lowell have had some learning opportunities in getting used to some of their new stuff and, oh, you know, what you would have picked or could have picked or maybe didn't pick, or how that all went down. Is there any way that we're capturing that and passing it on to some of the other schools that may have the opportunity to get new stuff?
Yeah, there absolutely has been. Jeanette Rankin, for example, most of the staff over there went to Lowell, actually, and toured, so looked some of their equipment. And when we started talking about fixtures, furniture and equipment, they actually mentioned very distinctively that they wanted to make sure that they didn't follow in some of the equipment that was chosen from that process. We've rectified a lot of the issues, some being with height adjustments and that kind of stuff, but we were able to fix some of those things. But yes, very much so.
I'm sure they saw stuff they liked, too.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to grant permission to solicit fixtures, furniture and equipment bids for the schools listed in the agenda? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any trustee discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion to grant permission to solicit the fixtures, furniture and equipment bids for the schools listed, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we'll move on to number four, which is the same request concerning high schools, the Big Sky, Sentinel, Willard and the Egg Ed Process Kitchen. Is there a motion to grant permission to solicit the fixtures, furniture and equipment bids for the schools listed? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Actually, by a trio of trustees. I'll randomly pick trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of the motion to grant permission to solicit the fixture, furniture and equipment bids for the schools listed, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Well, I'm sorry, trustee Decker? Sorry, jump the gun. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come on to grant permission to solicit for the removal of hazardous materials at two of the middle schools. Burley, is there anything you want to add? We have background information on that in our packet.
No, it's pretty self-explanatory. Just, we're currently in design at Porter Middle School, but this is kind of gives us a head start on getting those assessments done and what hazardous materials we need to have removed. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward with Meadow Hills, or Meadow Hill Middle School and CS Porter in the elementary, and then Big Sky High School would be on the high school.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess on the hazardous materials, this is different than asbestos, right? So what other stuff are we looking at?
This is asbestos, and typically we are looking for lead-based paint as well.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none. Then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to grant permission to solicit bids for the removal of hazardous materials associated with constructions, projects at CS Porter and Meadow Hill Middle Schools? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? All in favor of getting hazard materials out of the school? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of the motion to grant permission to solicit bids for the removal of the hazardous materials at the two middle schools, please indicate by raising your hand. That's unanimous as to elementary trustees present. And then we move on to the same topic, but it is to deal with the last high school, that's Big Sky High School. Is there anything additional to add to this? Burley? Nothing? Okay. Any questions for Burley about the same remedy being afforded to Big Sky? Seeing no other questions. Is there a motion to grant permission to solicit bids for the removal of hazardous materials associated with construction projects at Big Sky High School? Moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of the motion to solicit bids for the removal of hazardous materials in connection with construction projects at Big Sky High School, please indicate by raising your hands. Trustee Decker?
Yes.
So that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to B1, which is to approve the personnel report that's found beginning on page 61. Is there anything in particular to point out as to this?
No, I think it's a much smaller report than we had in May, but I'd answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Trustee?
Yeah, I'm just glancing through this, and I'm seeing a summer ESY program, and I'm seeing credit recovery positions, and I guess I just don't remember seeing that. Can you tell us about the credit recovery?
The credit recovery classes are for students who had failed. I mean, I think Ms. Julie can probably speak to it better than I. And so students have an opportunity to take those courses through a credit recovery program, the Montana Digital Academy, correct. And so we offer those opportunities where the students will, we have staffing at the schools, students will go in and then get those credits that they had missed during their school year.
With support in the room.
With support in the room, right. And I would just add, we have done that the past several years.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Then is there a motion that we approve the items on the personnel report that's attached beginning on page 61? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? We don't discuss specific individuals, but we can discuss generally anything personnel-related. Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving the items on the personnel report found beginning on page 61, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Decker?
Yes.
So that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to B2, which is a recommendation that we have a first reading of a revision to board policy 3416 concerning administration of medication. Superintendent thing, not trustee thing. Could you explain how the law has changed and that's why our policy, it's being recommended that our policy be changed?
Thank you. The last legislative session, recognizing the concern with opioid use, provided the authority for school districts to stock an opioid antagonist. So if, in fact, we were to experience an overdose that was a critical life-threatening situation, we could administer the antagonist, Narcan, and do so before emergency services arrived and potentially save lives. We have very specific training that has been completed by some of our district nursing staff, as well as some of our administrative staff. And as a result of participation in training, we receive the antagonist at no cost to the district and can stock it. We're not certain for the long term if we'll continue to have access to free supplies. We hope that it's something we never have to use, but it's nice, just as we have AEDs in the building, it's nice to have the opportunity should an emergency situation arise. We're looking at administrative regulations that would be specific to middle schools and high schools. Again, one of our concerns is because of the fact that we use itinerant nurses essentially and don't have them based in the elementary buildings, we don't have the kind of coverage there, nor do we administratively have as many bodies available. So that's more of a challenge, but we think that this largely would be an issue, in terms of students anyway, that would be more likely seen at the middle school and high school. So that'll be our first priority. We'll continue to evaluate the program and determine then if we would want to alter regulations and include middle schools at some point, or elementary schools, excuse me, at some point in the future. So the administrative recommendation is that we pass this on first reading. It's been reviewed by legal counsel, as well as Linda Simon in Nursing Services, and then we would like to put it out for public comment.
Any questions? I do have one question. It also looks like legal counsel has recommended on page 71 of our packet that we make a change to the current policy, which deletes a phrase with a physical disability, which prevents independence in the act, and then adds in unable to do that. That seems to be a reasonable, I don't even know what the first sentence means, but I don't think that's specific as to the opioid, but just to clean up that aspect of the policy.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize for not pointing that out. We have specific protocols for administration of medications. And again, oftentimes in the elementary buildings in particular, you might find that secretaries may be delegated to administer medications at noon time. And oftentimes, those are simply providing those bottles to students. The original policy referenced, if there was a particular disability that prevented a student from being able to open his or her bottle, that that could be done for them. And again, it's regarded as self-administration of medication. This would just alter the policy if someone's simply unable to open it, regardless of whether it's a result of a disabling condition or not. We could assist with opening it, but they would still administer their own medication.
Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing, oh.
The opioid antagonist is a really unpleasant thing to think about, but it's good that we're doing that. And I just want to ask sort of for the record, if this situation does arise, is there, is there follow-up that's done with the student or the individual who needs to have this? And I'm thinking, of course, of counseling and that sort of thing.
Certainly, I think that would be appropriate in terms of the protocol. And I would also say that when the legislature passed this new act, this is permissive language. School districts are not compelled to do it, but we felt it important enough that we should address it within our district. So again, it's all part of overseeing and supporting all students. I could also potentially see community members who might be in a crisis situation at a school benefiting. And I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that essentially there's a Good Samaritan clause, that there's not liability essentially incurred by the individuals who do administer it.
Any other questions? That answered my question, since I noticed the referenced Montana statute has also in the title, limit on liability. So thanks for answering that part. So those turn back. So is there no more questions? So is there a motion that we approve the first reading of the revision to board policy 3416, titled Administration of Medication? And that we authorize the district to post it for public comment? And then we'll come back to it after the requisite amount of time is passed for public comment. There's a motion from trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. So any public comment? Have one member of the public. Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving for the first reading the revision to board policy 3416, Administration of Medication, and to authorize its posting for public comment, knowing that it will come back to us for second reading. All those in favor, please say, or say aye, please raise your hand, since it's easier for me to count that way. Trustee Decker?
Yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item 10, which is public comment. We allow public comment at the beginning and end of our meetings, just in case someone can't get here right as the meeting starts. Is there any public comment on any other item? If you'll just come up to the podium, and if you state your name, and if you recognize, represent a group, if you can identify what group you might represent.
My name is Sharon Sturbis. I'm a school board trustee at Target Range School. And I thought, since the meeting's over, I thought I'd just introduce myself, because I put in an application to be, fill in the vacant trustee seat. So I wanted to come see what the meeting was like. The last time I've been to an MCPS meeting was when my oldest was in ninth grade. She got an award, and now she's in med school right now, so it's been a while. But my youngest is going to be a ninth grader at Big Sky High School, so I still have a lot of interest. So thank you for giving me the chance to introduce myself.
And with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Elliot, for being here.
Yes.